All right, we ready to start? All right, welcome to the Nisswa mayoral and city council candidate forum. My name is Pam Dorian, president of the Nisswa Chamber of Commerce. I'm honored to be the moderator this evening, and we're proud to partner with all five area chambers of commerce and League of Women Voters and the Brainerd Dispatch to bring you this event. A special thanks to all the volunteers for helping with this event. I'd especially like to thank the candidates, those in attendance, and those watching on YouTube. As you know, we have the right to vote and a responsibility to make an informed choice. These forums are a wonderful opportunity for us to get to know the local candidates by hearing from them directly. Today's event will be livestreamed on the Nisswa Chamber of Commerce YouTube page and will be available for viewing until election day. Our live broadcast is made possible by a grant from the Brainerd Lakes Area Community Foundation. Tonight, we will cover the Nisswa City Council and Mayor race. The council has a four-year term, and two seats are available for reelection this year. The mayor has a two-year term, and of course, only one will be elected. Before we begin, I'd like to cover a few points. First, the view expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not of those of the forum organizers. Our organizers do not endorse candidates or political parties. We also ask our attendees to be as quiet as possible while the candidates are speaking to everyone, so everyone is able to hear. Please hold your applause until the forum has ended, so that the candidates have as much time as possible to make their points. No photography or video recording is allowed during this forum. Be sure to silence your phones. You are welcome to submit written questions for the candidates, either on paper provided or by making comments on YouTube. Raise your hand, and our question runner, Callie, will bring you a piece of paper and come get it when you're done. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. We reserve the right to reword or consolidate questions in order to cover as many topics as possible. If you do not get a chance to ask a question, or the answer is unclear, feel free to speak with the candidates after the forum. Each candidate will be given a three-minute for opening remarks. I will ask a series of prepared questions, then the audience's questions. Candidates will have one and a half minutes to respond to each. Each candidate will then be given a one-minute for a closing statement. To ensure fairness, we will rotate the order of answering. If time runs out, I will call time, but if you are mid-sentence, you will be allowed to finish that sentence. Our volunteer timers today are Cam Dorian and Deb Best. Our question screeners are Tina Foster and Matt Killian, and our question runner is Callie J. With that, we'll move on to our opening statements, beginning with Mr. Fred Heidman. Fred?
Good evening, everyone. Sounds like the microphone's working, thank you. So my opening this evening is, with exception of few years of my life, I've been a resident of Nisswa. I grew up here, I went to school here, I raised my family here. I've seen many changes, I've grown with those changes, I've embraced those changes. In life, we learned the only constant is change, and that was primarily the reason I ran for the position of councilman six years ago. It was the reason I ran for mayor four years ago, because I saw the need for change. The city was not changing, not making the adjustments that other communities were making, falling more and more behind in most departments. Department heads at that time ran things the way they wanted, with little supervision, accountability to the citizens, and the city with some was nonexistent. I've never desired to be a politician, I've never desired to be a councilman nor a mayor, but I had an enormous desire to see the city I've lived in be as good under the hood as it appears on the outside to the thousands of vacationers that visit us each year. I ran, and I've been elected, was elected, and reelected two more times. The citizens have told me that I am the one they can trust to help them with concerns and problems that they need to share and have resolved, whether they're planning and zoning, program concerns, road and street concerns, staff behavior and concerns, and police department concerns. They tell me if anyone can get it done, I can. I've been told I'm a visionary, being able to see, then lay out the movements to get things accomplished. Also, I have a good vision for the city balancing growth with protecting our trees and resources, keeping our touristy feel, protecting that important aspect, yet picturing the future with growth in the community. While mayor, I was pushed to save downtown, I pushed to save downtown parking places. When we couldn't agree to save them all, I pushed, and we were able to add a few back in. I pushed hard against a 60-foot-long railing downtown that was proposed to be in front of Rafferty's Martins and the gift store. Apologies, I have a bit of asthma thing going. I fought hard for the city of residents on Edna Lake Road, and we prevented road assessments for them, and I negotiated a plan with Public Works that worked both good for the citizens as well as the neighboring community, in another matter.
Thank you.
And I see the stop, so, thank you.
All right, Mr. John Ryan, three minutes.
Thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for hosting this forum. As a citizen of the Crow Wing County area for all but nine years of my life, and a citizen of Nisswa for well over 20 years, I also served as a law enforcement officer in this area for, well, 27, 23 years. So I'm very well acquainted with this area. Before the city of Nisswa went back to its own police department, I was contract deputy through Crow Wing County in the city of Nisswa. A lot of things have changed since 1984, and the city has changed with some of that, and some of it hasn't changed. But one thing that I saw when I ran for council four years ago is a lack of direction, a lack of direction from the city council to the employees of the city. One of the things that, when I ran, I felt was absolutely necessary is that we embrace the city administrator position. Not a popular position with some, but it was necessary. Somebody has to run and be accountable slash in charge, and make sure that the job gets done. The liaison system, although it worked very well for many years, just isn't tenable anymore. That said, council members still have an obligation to be as involved and as kept up to speed with the various things going on in the city, be it Public Works, which I serve as a liaison for Public Works, be it the police department, parks and rec, planning and zoning. Another thing I saw was not enough attention being paid to those things that affect everybody's life every day, mostly Public Works and planning and zoning. We need to grow, and we need to grow correctly, not quickly, not fast, not just anything goes, but we need to grow correctly. I strongly believe that if you give the people in the city an opportunity, the citizens an opportunity, to voice their opinion, that we will grow together. That's another reason why I was very active in getting the current, or, excuse me, the current website that we have up and running, much better, more interactive, by no means done. It needs a lot of polish, but we have to be able to get the information to the citizens, and that's what I'm telling you I will do. Get the information, what's happening in your community, to the citizens, and get your feedback. This is your town. It's not my town, it's not the council's town, it's your town. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Fier, three minutes.
Hi, please call me Bob. I'll give you a little background. ... because there's about 25% of the people here I don't think I've met personally. I haven't been lifelong in Nisswa. I grew up in the suburb of Minneapolis, and one of my family's traditions was always to come to Round and Gull Lake. So from 1956, it was special, we came up here. I liked it so much that I used to hitchhike and come up here to races and other things, sometimes on myself, when I got to be 16 or so. My background after college was engineering and business. I worked for a big airplane company, Boeing, for about 17 years, and then got into facility management for kind of a pharmaceutical-type company called Amgen. So my background is managing sites and taking care of the grass, and staying in touch with clients, and the things of that nature. Retired from a career of that in 2005, and got into a small business. I run a powersport dealership actively, and then became a stockholder in about 2010, and moved home to Nisswa, so to speak, and I've been here for 10 years. I become, in small steps, more and more involved in the city ongoings, coming to council meetings, being on a few committees like Nisswa Trail, Nisswa Lake Park, and currently on planning and zoning, and kind of a natural fit for me. Some things I wasn't quite comfortable with, but my attitude is, don't complain to others if you don't like something that's happening, volunteer. See if you like it, see if you can make a difference. The reason that I'm running is, there's a couple vacancies, and I think I could, I think I could do a pretty good job. However, you know, I think you should pick the best two people for the two slots, and one thing about me is I've always been in touch with my clients, so you're the clients. I have my personal opinions, politics, and religion, and elsewhere, but I really want to do what the majority of you think is the direction you want to take in Nisswa. So I'd be honored to be a councilman, and if I'm not, I'm still going to support my town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ross Crow Kramer, three minutes.
Good evening. I want to thank the chamber, and thank you all for taking time to come here. I am pretty much a lifelong resident of Nisswa. Went to Nisswa Grade School from second grade on, worked at Schaefer's Foods when I was 14, went in the service, was a cop in the Air Force, got married, and we decided where we wanted to live, obviously, Nisswa. My wife was from Pine River, and Nisswa was our first choice. Came back, worked at Schaefer's as the manager. So my background in Nisswa has been pretty extensive. I have spent the majority of my working career working in Nisswa, for Schaefer's Foods for a lot of years, and now for Nisswa Marine for a lot of years. So I was a 24-year veteran of the Nisswa Fire Department, that was my introduction. Well, I always have, always have been community-minded, always have been, but that was my introduction, and that's where 100% of my energies go, went at that time. When I do volunteer or state that I'm going to do something, I give it 110%, which I did with the fire department. I was the assistant chief for a lot of years. I was also the president of the Relief Association that took care of the investments for the firemen. When I retired after 24 years, at that time, the city of Nisswa was trying to fire the police chief, and at the time, it was, at any rate, that is when I decided that maybe I could get involved with the city, and that was my lead-in, just in the way that that was handled and the amount of monies that it costed. A vacancy came open on the city council, I applied for it, I was selected. That fall, I ran, and I was elected. We had a lot to do, and a lot got done. I'm very proud of the four years I put in. We started on a sewer system, we got the park going, and I learned a ton. And so I took a two-year break, and now I want to come back, apply the things, the knowledge, the experiences that I learned the first time around. And again, when I commit to something, I give it 110%. I know I do the homework, I know what decisions we're making, and I ask the questions before the meeting, and I come prepared, and I would like to do that again for another four years for the citizens of Nisswa. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Utzinger.
Yeah, Utzinger. Yes, I'd like to thank the chamber for tonight, and also everybody that's here, and everybody that's listening on YouTube. My name's Mark Utzinger, and I'm relatively new here in Nisswa, however, my roots go way back. I've only lived here full-time for three years here in Nisswa, I live right on Lake Hubert, and my grandfather was the EUB pastor in Brainerd. That church is no longer there, I mean, it's there physically, but it's a private residence now, and my dad graduated from high school in Brainerd. And when my parents got married and they had their honeymoon, it was at the old Evanger's Cabin at Lake Pelican. So I actually remember riding the horse and the train at the Totem Pole, and we've come here every year for the summers. And so this has been a very special place for me, it's almost magical for me. That's why I decided to retire here. I went to McAllister College, I graduated from there in '81. I traveled to Japan, I lived there for five years. I worked for the Ministry of Education in Japan, in Ehume Prefecture on Shikoku Island, and Matsuyama's the city. And then I worked for the company that I work for now, I worked for them for 36 years then. They are a manufacturer of industrial and commercial steam and hot water boilers. So I helped to establish the company up in Canada first, I lived there for three years. We built the plant, and I started that, and then started the sales and service in Canada. And then I was moved down to the United States, I lived in Chicago for 17 years doing sales and service, I started up the company there. Then I was asked to go to Rockmart, Georgia, sort of a rural area, northwestern part of Georgia, where we built another plant, and I became the president of that manufacturing plant. I had the full responsibility of all the production that we did. And then, when we joined our sales side as well as the manufacturing side, then we became a corporation in North America, with Canada, US, Mexico, and Brazil, and I became the, what they like to call, the defense of the company. And so I handled HR, I was director of HR, accounting, QC, and legal, so that in case we were sued for anything. So then, now I will be retired at the end of March officially. So I'm here now in Nisswa, and I'm going to be living here as a full-time resident, and I love this area, so.
Thank you. All right, on to the prepared questions. A reminder, you'll have one and a half minutes to answer each of these following questions. We will start with Mr. John Ryan. What do you see as the greatest opportunity and the greatest challenge for the city of Nisswa, and how would you address them?
I'd say the greatest opportunity for the city, as we speak right now, as being the ability to engage our businesses in order to expand our businesses, to expand our tax base in that way, while we keep the up-north and the Nisswa feel. I can't find any other word to call it, other than the Nisswa feel, because we're the only place in the state that has it. I think what we need to do is to engage our staff and our city administrator to go out, work with neighboring communities, work with BLADEC and other areas, so we can try and engage and fulfill to the taxpayers, getting that business going, getting the businesses going again, while keeping that up-north feel. It's not going to be easy. I also think that we need to take a solid look at our comp plan, and our comp plan can guide us through that. We've put it together, and we have certain challenges with our comp plan, and it's not going to be an easy thing to fulfill those edicts that were given to us by those who put the comp plan together, and we ratified it as a city council. We have to keep using it. The last comp plan wasn't used, it was shelved, and, okay, we did that. We can't do that. We have to look at those things, incorporate them into how we move forward, incorporating businesses, and that up-north tourism feel.
Thank you. Same question to Bob Fier. What do you see as the greatest opportunity and the greatest challenge for the city of Nisswa, and how would you address them?
Very similar to what my predecessor just said. I see rapid expansion of commercial businesses and other entire entities coming up the 371 corridor, storage sites, et cetera. And so, we in Nisswa want to keep the up-north feel, it's a special place to me and to everybody in this room. However, I think we can do that by staying in touch with our customer base, the comp plan, and using a little bit of prudence. We're going to let some storage sites be developed, but we're going to have some screening with evergreen trees, we're going to have separation from the sites to other churches, so there'll be a few developed, but we're not going to be a solid metropolitan area like you'll see creeping up from the 210-371 intersection. We're doing some things better than we did five years ago, 10 years ago when I first came here. I think the addition of a city administrator, we're doing some electronic surveys to stay better in touch with our customers. What I don't like is when we about to start construction, and all of a sudden, there's 100 people at a meeting. So I would, I would like to employ several ways to be in touch with our community a little bit more proactively. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question for Ross Crow Kramer. Greatest opportunity and greatest challenge?
I think our greatest opportunity right now today is Nisswa. We are growing, our streets are full in the summertime, people are coming here, Grand View is expanding to a lot more people, we just are on kind of a roll, and you can see it in our businesses, you can see it in the businesses' parking lots. I think as a city, we're on a roll, a lot of things have been done with the city administrator, and a lot of things have just gone in the right direction. But I think the biggest challenge is that we need to be looking at the future. These rainy days can come to a short, especially in a tourist, when your economy's really based on the economy of the world, your tourism's first to go. And I think businesses, I think business growth is a huge, it's income for the city to develop property and get that tax base. I think that's definitely needs to be more of a focus, but we just need to look at the future as far as our finances, as far as our departments, and try to plan for our kids and what's going to come in the future. Because in the last four years, things have gotten very, a lot more expensive, our wages have gone up, and we need to be forecasting that down the road to make sure that Nisswa will be this way 10, five years from now, 10 years from now, in 20 years. And I think more focus on that is, would be a good step in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Utzinger, same question.
Okay, well, again, everybody's been saying, it's this growth of Nisswa. It's the reason why I came here too, we have such a beautiful combination of nature, the lakes, and we want to protect that as well as provide growth for commerce around here. In the summertime, we grow probably about three times what we are in the wintertime, so there are a lot of challenges as well, and I think a lot of that is infrastructure and trying to make sure that we can handle that type of growth in the future as well. So that's, those are probably the two main areas, you know, the one main area as far as a challenge, but as far as growth for the future, that would be a very big opportunity for us in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Heidman, same question.
Greatest opportunity, I think, you know, I think the other candidates spoke very well about that, I'm in agreeance with all of that. I see, with my work and my business, I meet a lot of people from out of town, from out of the state, and sometimes from other countries. I am seeing this summer, an amazing interest in people moving to this area. You know, remote working, work at home is becoming the norm, so many people are, that I talked with from big cities are like, I think it's time for us to move, and move out of the big city, we can do our work from wherever we're at. One guest, or client that I talked with, who was staying at a resort, said, we could stay here for the whole summer, and we can, both my husband and I could do our work right here, and we wouldn't even have to leave. So, you know, being prepared for, you know, for that kind of growth, I think, is going to be important. For the most part, I think our internet services are pretty good, and can handle most of that, which would certainly be important. And then protecting, our greatest challenges would just be protecting our resources through this growth, and, you know, you know, when I grew up here, Pine and Lakes was what this area was all about. It seemed like a third of the businesses were called Pine and Lakes Realty, Pine and Lakes Gas Station, Pine and Lakes Hardware. So, you know, protecting those things are very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number two for Mr. Fier. What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes
Well, city services is pretty broad term. We could talk about policing, we could talk about recycling, we could talk about utilities. I think there's a rank order of importance, and there's some things that we have to do, and we've got a certain tax revenue, and those have to be funded. In a sense of a COVID-19 year, we do have some, what I will call, unallocated funds, and I think for a, you know, year like this, where there's been a hiccup in our revenue stream, with some people that have small businesses, let's shore up those services we have to have. But I basically am a person that believes in not long-term bonding, and that we should basically fund our services based upon the revenue available. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ross Crow Kramer, what is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes and fees?
Well, that's kind of one of the main things of what it's, what it's all about on the council. It's a never-ending task, and in the Nisswa community, it's harder because of our influx. You know, we're a town of 1,900 that has to have the infrastructure and the facilities to handle a town of 30,000 for six, three months of the year, four months. So that's, you know, that's always at the bottom of everything you do, and it's not easy. It's not easy with things that are, you know, prices keep going up, wages go up, and so it's something where more time and effort needs to be spent on the budget, and where the money's going, and how it's being spent. It becomes, it becomes more and more important as times change, and again, as things just get more expensive. A fire truck, when I started, was, you know, $60,000, now it's a million dollars. I mean, that's, that's just a huge, and to meet that, you just have to be on your toes, and you have, you have to be looking down the future, and you have to be accountable to what you do, but it's, that's the job that we're to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Utzinger, same question.
City services is a broad, broad statement, you know, what do you, huh, that's a tough one. But as far as the city services, I believe whatever company that you are, whatever organization that you belong to, as you grow, there is more need for money to efficiently run the company or the city, and you can always find, you should spend a lot of time looking at how efficiently you can operate, so you don't have to just add a lot of money. So I like to look at efficiencies, that's very efficient, that's very important, and then you hopefully can tie that to the amount of tax base growth that you have in your, in our city, because we do have that challenge, that we have so many people here that need to use, utilize our services for the summertime with the tourism, and then they go back, and then you need to prepare for the next And then you need to prepare for the next summer. So typically I don't like to throw a lot of money at something. I like to try to be as efficient as possible with what you can do and make sure your infrastructure is very strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heidman, same question.
Could you read that again, please?
What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes and fees?
So I think the, my belief is that as a, as a city, the council and the mayor need to take, need to be willing to take really hard looks at our budgets every year. In the, you know, we are, the budget process kind of lays out, and I maybe won't get through all this, but if you'd like to talk to me afterwards, I'd be glad to. The process starts out with each department presenting what they would like to have, what they think their needs are going to be. And that's, that's a great place to start. Council is then asked to put a maximum on what increase for the year that we would consider. Usually that starts out pretty high, it starts out as a higher figure because of unknowns with, you know, labor negotiations, costs that we don't know about for the next year. Over the period of a couple of few months, that gets whittled down and whittled down and whittled down. And in the end, we hope that we come up with a number that's reasonable. Myself, I'd like to take, see the city take a different approach and that is to really dive into each department and have some discussions on what do we expect and need? And are we over, are we not looking at how to save money as much as we are? How to just keep a percentage from being higher than what we talked about last time? Thank you.
Thank you. John Ryan, same question.
Thank you. The city of Nisswa is in a very good financial position thanks to council's preceding us. Because of that, we're able to do things for certain departments or various aspects of purchases and stuff in a much better way. We're able to, to in some cases stroke a check like we did for the fire truck, purchase it and then the fire department pays us back over a period of so many years. So it was really a nice way to be able to not have to bond for things, et cetera. That's what we have to do in those respects, for capital improvements and things of that nature. But ultimately, the decision or the, the cost, what the people are willing to spend comes down to them. What do you want? What don't you want? What do you want to be, get rid of? Public safety is critical, our fire department, our police department is critical. At Grand View, they can hold up to 1,500 to 1,700 people. That's a small city within the city. This summer, some of those numbers were just about met. Actually, I think they were met. But we have to be prepared for that and what it brings. 77, County Road 77 outside of a Grand View, for example, roundabout would be a cure for a lot of problems. It's a million dollars, 1.5 million. We have to be prepared for those kinds of price tags and it's going to take tough decisions on the part of the council.
Thank you. All right, next question, starting with Mr. Crowe Kramer. What role, if any, should the city play in helping local businesses and individuals recover from COVID, from the COVID crisis?
I think that the city should be very active in that role. And I think that the city should be very active in that role with COVID-19 and I think on an everyday basis. Having worked in Nisswa my life, I, my entire life, you know, I understand these businesses, it's not easy to have a business in a seasonal area. You, you, you're tired at the end of the summer and you just work to try to make it through the winter. With Nisswa, of course, that's gotten better. So I, I guess to answer the question, the city really needs to be a partner with the area businesses and people, the people that have been affected by COVID, whether they're working out of their house or, or it's a business on Main Street or on the highway. We need to be, we need to be partners to them and, and they need to let us know what we need to do to help them. And then we need to be open and receptive and do everything that we can to, to do it. It's, it's a two-way street, we got to know the need, but then we have to step up and, and fill that need. And, and that always, that just always should be, we should always be partners in that aspect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yudzinger, same question.
I feel that if, if we tax the citizens of Nisswa and businesses, that some of that should go to help with COVID-19 issues, if that is a real issue. I mean, I'm not, I don't know how badly we've been hurt, I'm fairly new at this yet. But if we need to, it's the city, as the government of this Nisswa, should be helping out. Especially since we're taxing citizens here, that's the way I feel.
Thank you. Mr. Heidman, same question.
My, my belief is, is as well that we need to do everything that we can to help the businesses, you know, as well as help citizens. I mean, we're all in this together, so to speak. And, you know, if businesses, if we lose businesses, that costs us jobs, it costs us tax base, it causes empty buildings and, you know, that's not a good thing. I have been encouraging businesses to be involved with the monies that are available to help get through the COVID crisis. And, you know, there's a lot of businesses in town that have taken advantage of that. There are more businesses that could take care, that could take advantage of that. I think not only, you know, part of supporting is also educating and, and encouraging businesses. So, yeah, you know, business is important. It's what, it's what kind of keeps the, the mouse running in the trap, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan, same question.
I can tell you what we have done. The city of Nisswa received a sizable grant from, I believe it was the CARES Act, the federal government. And there's a number of things that we could use that money for. And we went, we vetted through a number of things that were provided to us by city staff. And there were, there were some things that were critical, that really made a lot of sense. And there were other things that, okay, yeah, that would be nice to do, but is it really necessary? And we determined it wasn't. We voted on it at the last council meeting. And one of the things that I said when we voted was that eliminating some of the other items on the list assured that the, as much money as we could go into the BLATIC, which is working through BLATIC and providing grants. And the amount of money that we didn't use from CARES went into that for grants for businesses in the city of Nisswa. So it was important for me that the majority, or as much money as we could, now I wouldn't say the majority, but as much money as possible was available to the, those businesses in the city that were very negatively affected by COVID. Everyone's affected to a different level. There isn't a one-size-fits-all with COVID and we're forging pretty new ground with this thing. It's the first time this has happened in my lifetime and I don't know about everyone else. But the, I would like to see us ensure that those funds that we are made available to us as much as possible go to people that need it.
Thank you. Bob Frier, same question.
Wow. I think we should use all the funds that we have at our disposal, but first is understanding the problem. Round numbers, 80% of the people in this country work in small businesses. We need to understand the problem, we need to, we need to understand who's really in trouble and allocate money where it's best needed. If there's a national chain and they can draw upon other states, maybe they're a little bit lower on the list. And there's some industries that don't need help, the bicycle industry, the power sports industry have had banner years since May 1st. I can tell you that firsthand. But there's other industries that are really struggling. So I don't disagree with anything I've heard here. It's just let's make sure we spend the money that we have prudently and it gets to the right people and make the biggest impact.
Thank you. I want to take just a moment to remind you, if you have come up with a question, to raise your hand, we'll have somebody bring you a sheet of paper. And if you have questions on YouTube, remember to submit them now. All right, question number four. Mr. Yudzinger, do you think our Main Street downtown is healthy and successful? If not, what would you do to change that?
Well, if you look at, on the summertime at least, we're very, very busy in the Main Street. I think it's very nice, but the one problem I'm seeing is, well, I, what I personally feel is that there's not much space downtown. And to be able to utilize that space as efficiently as possible, that's going to be a challenge. And I would hope that we could actually expand Main Street a little further, but that would have to take a lot of looking at and what the possibilities are.
Thank you. Mr. Heidman, same question.
It's always an interesting question because we don't, we don't get, you know, much, a lot of reports from downtown businesses as to what kind of a year they're having. Generally, you know, you kind of get an overall feel, but you don't necessarily get individual feel. You know, I think, I'll just share, you know, I remember when I was a young boy growing up here, downtown Nisswa in the summertime was, had about the amount of traffic that we've had since on the streets after Labor Day of this year. When I was a kid, Labor Day, after Labor Day weekend, most everything shut down except for the gas station and Martin Sports. And certainly things are much different now than they were then. You know, I don't, I don't know, you know, I, I don't know how prosperous they are. You know, you ask and, you know, people are kind of like, yeah, it's a, it's an okay year, it's a pretty good year. But, you know, I think that, you know, what the city can do is, is, you know, look to, to keep as much space available and to create space available for parking and help. And the city does do a good job with helping with events and promoting events to get people downtown. You know, and so I think those are the, the big things that we, that we, as a city can do. I don't believe it's the city's job to manage businesses. I don't think it's the city's job to tell businesses what they should or shouldn't do. But just give a, an opportunity for them to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan, same question.
The single greatest comment that I've heard downtown is parking and the lack thereof. There is a bit of parking, but there's always a challenge, especially for people that are coming into town with larger vehicles like a motorhome or, you know, something along those lines. There isn't, Nisswa is, we're, we're kind of, kind of hemmed in, if you will. We really can't expand to the west because we have a highway in the way. But at the same time, I think that there's plenty of room for us to fix these problems. I think we can do it. It's going to take time and it's going to take a lot of input from people that own the properties, what do they want to see? The business people, I worked after I retired from law enforcement for a summer with Martin Sports. And it's amazing how many people come in and out of those stores every single day. And the one single complaint, again, parking, I wish we could have parked closer, I wish, okay. How do we do that? I don't have that answer, but I don't have to have the answer. We can engage people and we can all put our head together and figure out what that answer is. That and, and the ability for a downtown to expand a little, to make and to offer more opportunities for shoppers and residents. And those opportunities can be in the way of jobs, but for the younger, younger folks. But we need to take a look at the parking, that's the biggest challenge I see facing downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Frier, same question.
Would you repeat the question?
Do you think our Main Street downtown is healthy and successful? If not, what would you do to change that?
I think our Main Street is healthy and successful. It has some parking issues and I kind of smile when I hear this question. I'd like to, I think where our Main Street is based upon the automobile. And I happen to, on my way back to Nisswa, I happened to live in the city of Boulder for 15 years. And we made a decision on Pearl Street, which is our main east-west street, back in the mid-sixties, the city council did saying, we're not going to park or drive down Pearl Street. And all the businesses said, we'll be broken in six months. Well, anybody that's seen Boulder and their festivals and people and shuttle carts and everything else, business is great. So I'd like to see just a study plan, made up some citizens like we did in Nisswa Lake Park, that just conceptually looks at some alternatives, you know, like, do we need to have two or three boat storage buildings almost on our Main, Main Street? Or could we somehow induce the owner of that property to maybe move a little farther away? Open up some land there and, and could we have parking slightly to the east of downtown Main Street and somehow shuttle people in and horses or electric golf carts or something or walking? And of course, we have to do ADA and there's going to be exceptions for people with limited mobility. But let's just take a look theoretically at how maybe we could get a little bit away from cars.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe Kramer, same question.
I think our downtown is hugely successful. I think it's the crown jewel of our community. I think, and I do quite a bit, drive around other communities. And, you know, Nisswa's got a lot going on that other communities struggle with and that's, that's awesome. Parking's always an issue, always will be, I've definitely worked towards resolving that. But I think as a city, you know, we need to, we need to be there to promote Nisswa for our tourists. Our tourists are everything, we need, we need to promote it. The rooms at Grand View's added only helps our community and especially in the wintertime. I mean, I don't think people realize how huge it is to have this audience in the wintertime for our businesses and that we have people coming up here in the wintertime. And I guess as a city, we need to not rest on our, not rest and say, hey, we're there and everything is going good. We need to always be looking towards the future and we always need to be going, because this may not always be here. It's up to us as the city to protect it so it will. And I guess that's where I feel our energy should be is, is in just protecting what we have and being grateful for it, allowing our businesses, allowing more businesses to come in, helping them come in and keeping our businesses healthy. Because that's what draws the people here too. If the people don't have a place to go, they're not going to come. And if they don't have a place to stay, they're not going to come to a place to go. And it's the city's job to be managing that and, and moving forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Heidman, if the city was given a million dollars with no strings attached, how would you propose that money be spent?
Wow, that's a great question. That's a great question. I would, I would like to see it invested in, in, in paths, walking paths, biking trails. You know, the city's looking at and is working on rules and regulations for possibly having golf cars on the streets, certain areas. I think, I think getting away from automobiles to some extent, giving the residents and vacationers opportunities to come by bicycle, golf car, walk, skateboard would be wonderful. I think it would be a huge asset for the citizens to have more trails. I think it would be fantastic for the vacationers. Biking is so big, I've, I've met people from England who've come here just to bice. I've, I've met people from England who've come here just to bicycle because they hear, hear our bicycling is so good. The Cayuna, all the way up to Bemidji, you know, and the things that were built, the project that's been, it is in works and getting close to completion going around Gull Lake is just fantastic. And I think that's where I would probably look to spend that money.
Thank you. John Ryan, what would you do with a million dollars for the city? No strings attached.
I would have the city administrator put together, and the city department heads, put together ideas themselves, input from staff. And I also think that we would have to go and engage the citizens of the city. This is what we have. What can we do with it? What do we want to see with it? Enhancing our ability to host people here for their various outdoor recreational activities and stuff, adding to our tourism amenities and stuff. What is it that the people in the city of Nisswa would like to see it used for? What's that project? What's that thing that we, if we only had a million dollars? Well, now we do. Okay, what do you want to do with that? And I, I think that if, if everyone in the city says, well, you council people make a decision. Okay, we can do that. But I would like to know what the people of the city want to do with it. What do they want? What, what can we do to benefit not just the people in the community, but enhance our community so that we can attract more people? As the mayor said, perhaps it's biking, perhaps it's hiking, perhaps it's something to do with our water, our waterfront park. But what do the people want us to do with it? It's your city. That's what I want to know.
Thank you. Mr. Fear, same question.
I'm going to build upon a couple of things I've heard. First of all, I think I would engage the community. Might make it kind of fun, might have a contest, you know, come up with the best idea, three, three or less on how to spend a million dollars, win a dinner at Grand View. On another note, if was, I was king for the day and I couldn't take any input from anybody else. I think our projects, there's a couple of projects out there that may not be complete, that are significant. You've heard about it a little bit from Fred. To me, I was on the original conceptual design committee for Nisswa Lake Park. I think the park's about 25% complete. I think if it was more finished, it could be a revenue generator. Second of all, I haven't seen the legacy grant for the new Gull, Gull Lake Trail section that goes through Nisswa. But it's an off-road trail, it's going to connect from Azorba's area up to the tunnel. And just assuming that the legacy grant doesn't cover all the amenities, I was just riding the Sioux Line Trail a couple hours ago. And having some benches and proper signage and little rest areas, et cetera, would be nice. And certainly, you know, not excluding them, let's talk to our city staff. But really, most important to me probably is having some type of exercise with our constituents. Make it fun, get it excited. How are we going to get their input? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carl Kramer, same question.
I guess I would, if we were given a million dollars, I would maybe take a little bit different avenue. And I would look at our liabilities such as roads, equipment. And I think I'd put that money towards that. If we could start just rebuilding roads and replacing roads when they come upon and have the cash to do it and we don't have to borrow the money, I think that would be huge. And I think in doing some of that, it would free money to park towards the trails and the other things. But I, I really think I'd take a hard look at, at our, at our liabilities. And, and I would use the money to help us not have to borrow money every, I mean, I don't remember because it's been, but it was over a million dollars last time we did a group of roads. What if, especially with your interest rates, I mean, interest rates are great now, but they're not always going to be there. So what about when interest rates are 5% and we could take that million dollars? It was like John said with the fire truck, you know, which was, happened last minute at a meeting. I was just looking at it, but we had the money, so we paid the money and we saved all that interest. And it was quite a bit of money. So I think, I think I'd look towards that avenue as to putting the money to work for us and, and for our future, and for our future kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Yudziger, same question.
At first blush, I guess I would like to see a lot more of infrastructure, especially tourist infrastructure. You know, like what Fred was talking about, trails and for the bicycle, bicycles and the city park and hiking. I think that's a, a huge draw for people who come up here. That's one of the main reasons why I love it up here as well. However, I sort of look at what John had mentioned, the bottom-up type leadership in a way, that we ask, ask people who are really close to, close to the problems out there, that what would really help? And to get that input and activate the input from all, everybody in the area. And so that type of information is invaluable and I would really like to lean heavily on that as well. But at first blush, I would say more tourist infrastructure is where I would like to try to put that money. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we are, audience question number two. Mr. Ryan, when weighing a leadership decision, what do you lean on most? Public opinion or your personal judgment?
Myself personally, I will look at, I'll look at my judgment. But as a city leader, I would have to say, what is the public's opinion of the problem? The public might be wrong. They might not understand fully everything that goes into the question or the problem they're having. They may not understand everything and they deserve an explanation. You may, they may be right and you may have to address it the way they wish, that's fine. Or if it's not right and they need to understand, they, you owe them a decision, an explanation why and what and how you've come around to your decision, your conclusion. But there are a number of things in day-to-day operation of a municipality that unless you work in public employment, you don't understand. It doesn't, may not seem right, but it is. And this is why it has to be done that way. And people deserve to have that explained to them. And you don't have to agree with it, we don't even have to like it. Believe me, we don't either. But you at least have to be willing to explain it to people. If they're going to leave it up completely, I can make that decision and I would weigh on my personal experiences. Thirty years as a law enforcement officer, it's surprising what you deal with. Thank you.
Bob, same question.
Repeat the question, please.
When weighing a leadership decision, what do you lean on most? Public opinion or your personal judgment?
Well, I start with my personal judgment. It depends upon the, the decision. How, how, what are the ramifications of a poor decision made? How long do I have to make the decision? I would apply the rules and regulations that the city and my forefathers have set up for me. And I'd make sure that decision is made, timely decision, using those guidelines. There isn't a rush to judgment. If there is adequate time, I'm certain, and it's a major decision, like, do we add a water towers? A centralized potable water supply? That involves a lot of public input. And so I just get the ball rolling, listen to my constituents and facilitate the right, right decision being made. Certainly I'd have personal viewpoints, but the more input, the better, providing you have the, the time and the risks, risks involved factored in. Thank you.
Ross, same question.
I think that it's a balance, it's a balancing act. It's a balancing act of, of my personal opinion, that's very low, but that does factor in there. But it's, it's based on facts of each situation. And it's based on public opinion and that's important. But I think sometimes, you know, I hear somebody say, well, I talked to 100 people and they're for this. Well, that's, that's great, but there's 1,900 people that live in this town. That is not even close to being a majority thought. So I think when you're balancing public opinion, it's important to keep that you're representing the whole community. You're representing all 1,972 people. And, and so, and I think the facts are, you know, should really go into making that opinion. And I think once you make it, I think looking somebody in the eye and saying, okay, this is why I base this in my decision. These are the facts, this is what I did. And even if you may not like it, if you can at least show that, that you've listened to people, you've lived the facts, you did your homework and you made a decision based on that. I think in the end, even if they don't agree, hopefully you can at least get their respect. But I think it's a balancing act and it's a balancing act all the time. It's, it's on everything that you make is a balancing act. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, same question.
Yeah, I, I often, you know, I do have my own opinions, but I base everything on data, information and facts. That's what I'm interested in. And that comes from the community, that comes from our employees of the city, those who know much better than what I do, what really needs to be done. And I will take that into consideration. And I, I would rather rely on that. I'm not necessarily just opinions or public opinion. I really don't care about that as much as the facts, information and data. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred, same question.
Well, I've been a strong proponent, since I've been involved with the city on, first of all, improving our communication with the city residents. And one thing that I was, I pushed for and we have gotten is now we have our meetings on, recorded. They're on YouTube and people can watch them remotely. I was totally backing and supporting the change of our council meetings from Wednesday nights to Tuesday nights. We have numerous church activities going on on Wednesday nights. Moving to Tuesday night allows people who may not be able to attend because of other obligations to do so. You know, I tend to, I always ask citizens and I ask around as to what people are thinking. And that's hugely important. I've also shared that, and I believe this, that citizens aren't aware of all the different factors that go into making decisions. So taking that information and applying it the best that we can with, you know, logical thinking, common sense and using experience then makes for good decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next, next is Bob Fear. This is another audience question. What do you believe are the most important issues facing our police department and how would you address them?
Wow. Topic of the year, huh? I don't like to make a decision of any significance before I'm fully informed. And I am not fully informed on our police department, whether it's 100% efficient, whether it's staffed with the right amount of people. First thing I would do as a council member is get more, develop a closer relationship with the city administrator, who's definitely the, the boss of the police department. And just use her as a sounding board, whether or not it'd be the three of us in the meeting. But I was a big fan of developing a personal relationship with my engineering staff. We called it bagel meetings, you know? I brought in Mo's bagels and cream cheese and great coffee. And for 15 minutes, we talked about everything, anything for the, every other week. And it's, I'd build a relationship before I'd even put that task on the, on the, on the board. Because I don't like to jump to conclusions. I'm certainly not a defund the police person. As you know, my background and my brother in the air force and my half-brother, former chief of police in Minneapolis and a few other things. So that remains to be seen. If I do anything, we can always improve, but certainly nothing drastic for the first six months, that's for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Ross, same question. Most important issues facing our police department?
This is the deep end of the pool. I guess I am, I'm in support of our police department. I have spent time when I was a councilman, asked a lot of questions. And we had a relatively young department. And we had very, none that I know of complaints of overpolicing. You know, I remember we had a robbery and the guy was caught in the same day. And he was caught in the same day because the guys knew it. They've been, they were out on the streets, they knew what happened. I guess I'm a proponent in, in, in being present. That's what keeps speeds low. I know on the fire department, every year we'd have fatality on 77. And so police cracked down on speed and drinking and it went away. So I think keeping the speeds down on Highway 371 is important. I'm for the police presence on Highway 371 because it keeps the speed low. But the real reason I'm enforcing, I'm, I'm in favor of it is because I have two daughters and a wife that are on that road all the time. And you are at 65 mile an hour speeds and accidents are horrible. And I've been to too many of them. So I think our police department's doing a good job. The other thing is if there are problems, I believe in facts. I believe in the process of bringing it to writing, bringing it to the city's attention. Everybody has it in writing and then everybody knows it, everybody knows about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, the question again. What do you believe are the most important issues facing our police department and how would you address them?
Well, I, I think nowadays it's, there's a lot of hostility towards the police and a lot of emotionality. And I think that's very, very unfortunate. No matter what organization or what company or what city that you have, you're going to have problems. And there's going to be issues and you need to address them. And I would address them again by facts, data, information and through a process. Not through emotion or drama. I don't like that. I believe we just need to follow through with what's going on, take the challenges as they, as they, as they come to us. And to make sure that we address them in a very fair and open process so that everybody knows what we're doing.
Thank you. Fred, question again is what do you believe are the most important issues facing our police department? And how would you address them?
First of all, I'm a big supporter of good law enforcement, good police. And absolutely appreciate and understand the importance of that. One of the difficult parts of having been mayor for the last four years is that many people have come to me with grave, I don't say grave, with, with serious concerns about our police department. And I've heard them, I've helped in a couple of different cases. And I, I know that we, that council and citizens don't know the extent of what is happening behind the scenes. And that's why I called the last council meeting for an investigation. Because I do not believe it's any one of our jobs to dig out the information, to, to provide an opportunity for people to be heard. You know, people say, well, it, you know, well, we don't have any complaints. Yeah, right, we don't have any complaints, many complaints if any. People are afraid. They tell me all the time they're afraid. They don't want to, they go to city hall and they don't want to give their name. They don't want their face seen. They don't, they, it's a big struggle and I have a lot of thoughts about it and would be glad to engage anybody in discussion about it if they'd like to further. Thank you.
Thank you. John, same question.
In law enforcement, you're guaranteed to anger 50% of the people 100% of the time. Whenever you're called to any call, there's only one half that wants you there. So you're already at a disadvantage in some. already at a disadvantage in some people's minds. The biggest challenge facing law enforcement today is knowing that they're doing their job right, and that the city leaders, county leaders, state, federal, have their back. You gotta have their back, until they prove to you that you can't. Um, I've been on the council for four years. I've worked with some of the officers on the department when I was still in law enforcement, and I have seen no complaints. There's a process. If there's a problem, you come forward, you follow the process, it's very straightforward. And there are ways to keep people's names quiet while something is being investigated. But we've seen none of this. We have a very young department, and I can tell you that, and that, based on my years of doing the job, to have officers as young as we have, and not have the level of problems that you see in other departments is rare. So we're very fortunate to have the department we do. They need to know that we have their back, but problems need to be investigated when they are brought to the attention properly.
Thank you. One last question, and we are starting with Ross. What do you feel needs to be done to engage our citizens?
That is a tough, that's probably the toughest question of the night, to be honest with you, because I've struggled with it for the four years that I was on. Because you sit there, meeting after meeting, and you don't see people come to it, but everybody's busy, and I get that. So, um, I think that we've made great strides in our online polling. I think what I see when I was on there, I was excited about when we, you know, got the community involved, with, whether it be the parks, or the, you know, when we had these meetings to show people what we're doing, and the amount of people that would show up, that, that was exciting. When businesses would show up to try to get, you know, when they were trying to get Sunday liquor, that was probably one of the most exciting things on the council that I did, because it was like somebody was coming to us for our help, and, and, you know, hopefully I was a great help in pushing forward for that business to get that license on Sundays for our breweries. So I think it's a challenge, and I think it's a challenge that, but I think the responsibility falls on both sides. The citizens have a responsibility, and that's how I got involved in council, because I felt I had this responsibility as a citizen. If I don't like it, I need to talk about it. And I think that's, it's, I can only encourage people to let us know, whether we're on the street, if I'm elected, whether we're on the street, or coming to the council meetings, or whatever. Again, it's just a two-way street, but I'd like to see more of it. It's, it's, it's why we do, it's, for me, it's why I do councils, to help my, the citizens of this town, and I need the feedback too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, same question.
Um, I think I would try to use a little bit more technology. I think the idea that we have this online, a lot of the input that we could try to get is through asking questions online and getting that feedback. It's really very difficult otherwise. I agree with Ross, it's very difficult to try to get people involved when they're not necessarily interested. But there are a lot of decisions and a lot of money being used, so they, we need to try to convey that, and try to, I think, use technology, especially when we have issues like COVID. People don't want to get back together in person. So I would use a lot more technology and the internet.
Thank you. Fred, how do you feel, or what do you feel needs to be done to engage our citizens?
Certainly, I believe a stronger effort by council and staff to, to get word out to people. I think one big step that, again, I was, I really pushed for, and we have now, is our meetings online, so you can see our meetings, you can see what's being said, you can see who's saying, are they saying something, and are they voting the way they're saying? You can get the information firsthand, which is huge, rather than hearing it from one person who heard it from another person, or from another person. So that, that's big. I think we have the ability very easily, and if not through our own work through the county, to get the addresses of all our citizens, and, and send out newsletters, and encourage them to respond. And I would like to encourage the city to start using something along the lines of Survey Monkey, and get all the citizens so that, on board, so that we can send out questions, and we can get feedback without, they can do it at their, on their own time, and get it back to us. I've held myself a couple times, meetings for groups of citizens who had concerns about roads or other issues. So it's, it's about promoting, and, and promoting, promoting, and promoting, getting the word out, to, and let them know the importance of it, of their feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. John, same question.
Part of what we have to do is what we've already done. Our website is much better than it was before, I believe I alluded to that earlier. One of the things citizens can do, and it's very underutilized, and that is, just like with planning and zoning, you can sign up online, or, if you're me, you call the city staff and have them sign you up, because I'm not a techie. But you, when they, when someone posts something to our website, it will send you a notification that this has been posted, and you can look at that, and you can see, yep, I, I need to comment on this. Or we can even say, "Please comment on this." Department heads are able to put things online that way, and it will automatically notify you when we're going to be doing a project in your area, or if something is coming up in your area. If you want city sewer run down your road, for example, and we're going to be redoing that road probably in four years, we need to know those kinds of things. That kind of technology use is vital to us, and we have it, it's just not utilized. The other part is, we did vote on updating our AV and our, our ability to screen and talk to people, and, you know, face-to-face, virtually. So those things are all necessary to do. But most importantly, we have to get it out there, that your opinion is what matters, because this is your city.
Thank you. Bob, same question.
A question for you first, before I answer. How do we engage the citizens? I think you're talking about the entire city staff, including city council, or just the city council?
The citizens.
That's who we're going to engage, but, but who's, who's supposed to engage them? City council you're framing it, or the entire city staff?
Yeah, you.
Me. Um, well, let me first pick on the police and the fire department, because it's an easy one. This may exist, but I've been in a few situations where I'd like to give an officer or fireman a couple hours off during the week, and I'd like to see, basically, maybe them wearing their shirt, playing volleyball with the kids. I'd like to see, with a new miniature golf course, maybe, you know, beat a cop, win a Diet Coke, or, excuse me, a Coke, and, or maybe we're doing, using my pontoon or something at Nisswa Lake Park, and they're taking the kids tubing free every Wednesday for a couple hours. Too much what I hear out there is, you know, we're afraid of these officers and servants, and that can't, kids are important. So I would engage through some activities like that, possibly talking to the administrator and the heads of the two departments. As far as projects in a normal city, every decision that should be made, we should ask right behind it, a project, who's this going to affect? And the city council should, should, should answer that, and then, how do we reach them? Whether it's, whether it's, we're already doing that a little bit with Survey Monkey, I don't know how far along we are on a database of emails for a city newsletter, there's ways to do that, but, you know, who's this going to affect? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're on to the closing statements. Let's start with Ross, one minute.
Uh, closing statements?
From now.
Watch my minute. I guess what you see is what you get. I, I give 110% for what I commit to, I pull my own weight, I come to the meetings ready for the meeting, I've done my homework, I've talked to city staff, I've talked to who I need to talk to, I come ready for the work at hand. I show up for the budget meetings, I show up, and I do what's expected from me. If I see something needs to be done, I go for it. That's, I'm not an eloquent speaker. Again, it's what you see is what you get, but I'll look you in the eye, I'll tell you why I did something, I will tell you my reasons why, and, and that's, that's just who I am. I did that on the fire department, I do that at Nisswa Marine. I don't sit very well, I don't, I just, but I get the job done. And I guess that's, that's my strength, and, and my sense of community is what drives me to do this. It's my sense of community that drives me to be a councilman, and to make things better for people, and to help people. That's why I was a fireman, and again, that's why I joined the city council to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, your closing statement?
Yeah, I, since I've, I've been on the Public Works Commission here in Nisswa now, and I've enjoyed that. The main thing about, I believe in, is to do a lot of, get a lot of work done without any drama. I would rather work with data and facts, again, and this is something that I think is very important, to act very professionally, and work very towards the goal, and you work behind the scenes to, there's a thing that I learned in Japan, it's called nemawashi, I don't know if anyone's ever heard that, it's called riprinding. You don't rip out a bush to move it, you'll kill it, you bind all the roots first, and then you can move it, and it grows very well. So what you do is, it's the same thing with anything that you do for a project. You work behind the scenes, get everybody to agree to it, before you even have the meeting. And that way, you avoid a lot of issues at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Fred, closing statement?
Well, I think, you know, we've had a lot of good ideas, and, and, you know, sharing tonight, and that's, that's what we're here to do. You know, I would, my closing statement is, is based on four words. Strength, passion, vision, and determination. Vision, the ability to see problems and put together a plan. Willingness to seek input on details, create a working document that makes sense, long-term, good-for-all parties, and cost-effective. Passion, few people are more passionate about this community and how its citizens and visitors are treated than myself. That's utmost importance to me. Strength, the ability to stand, square in the gap, assisting citizens and city employees with various concerns, seeking the best possible outcome. And last, determination. Determined, determination is the key to getting things done. Thank you.
Thank you. John, closing statement?
Thank you. I'm asking for your confidence, you to put your confidence in me as mayor, to run, as your mayor, to be your mayor for the city of Nisswa. Again, I will engage the public. This is your community, this isn't my community, yes, I'm a part of it, but I'm here to serve you. And the people of Nisswa need to know that they have the ability to make their concerns known, and they need to know that they're going to be addressed. Again, they may not always get the outcome that they like, but you will get an explanation as to why. The other thing that I want to say is, I don't have an agenda. I have no agendas. I don't believe in agendas, agendas don't work, and I see too many agendas, and I've seen way too many in my lifetime, and it comes back to bite you every single time. With me, you're going to get a non-agenda-driven individual that is putting the city first and its citizens first. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, your closing statement?
Closing statement, sounds like my epitaph. I believe I have the technical and business skills for the position. I typically work from behind the scenes, I'm not, there's a number of people here that don't know me. I'd like to work through the people that I'm working with, the groups or subordinates. So one of my priorities would be, first of all, establishing relationships with city administrator, better relationships, and my city council members, and the mayor. That's really important. The work I've done with the city on certain projects, I've met a number of times with people in the group, in the committee, at coffee shops and elsewhere, bouncing my ideas off before the meeting, saying, "How do you see it?" Because that's important. I'm pretty straightforward, no matter who in the room's going to ask me my position or certain thing, and we give you the same answer. That's the way it was working for the DOD and the FDA, you know? You had to be straight, straight shooter. So I'd love to do the job for you. Certainly, please vote for the best candidate, because this city's important. Thank you.
Thank you. How about a round of applause for these guys? All right, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I would like to personally thank the five-area chambers of commerce, the League of Women Voters, and the Brainert Dispatch for helping put all of this on tonight. I'd like to thank my wonderful volunteers, as always, in Nisswa, and all of the candidates. I want to remind you, don't forget to vote. Early voting was September 18th, it's already started, and Election Day is November 3rd. Exercise your right to vote. Thank you.